I do regions to the
of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty of the people.
Before I go to public comments, I just want to say last week when our work session got canceled, the Shelter Island Ambulance Foundation still came over and presented a check for $80,000 to the town, put into the ambulance reserve account for a future purchase of an ambulance. So we have, I think we're up to 230 or 240,000 in that account accumulated. So, thank you to the Shelter Island Ambulance Foundation for that very generous donation. Anyone from the public have a comment? One on Zoom? Okay, we will jump into our agenda. We have a hard stop at 3 o'clock, and so we'll see how we do getting through everything today. And anything that we don't get to today, we'll get moved over to next week. So, hazard mitigation plan update.
So as the board knows-
Present name for the-
What's that?
Just your name for the-
Yeah, so Chief James Reed, also the, not only Chief Police, but they appointed me a family manager as the emergency management coordinator for the town. And in that role is really why I'm here today. Back in March, I came before the board as Suffolk County had begun discussions and asked the town to join in on renewing our hazard mitigation plan. And throughout the year, they've been working. They hired a company through grant funding through FEMA. Tetra Tech is the company to move forward on an overall Suffolk County hazard mitigation plan, of which we will be an annex in their overall plan. So, put together just some brief slides, kind of keep me on task. I'll roll through. If Christina can kind of can roll those, I'll speak, speak right off of those. Great. So, one of the keys for us to have a hazard mitigation plan, besides it being an important part for the town to stay on top of some of our concerns, is that it makes us eligible for FEMA funding and grant funding. And it also supports us in grants for the future, right? So, when FEMA looks at our agency and they're gonna, they put out a grant, you know, our ferry grants is an example, they'll look and see if we have a hazard mitigation plan. If we have a hazard mitigation plan, it positions the town, puts us in a great spot for grant funding from FEMA. You know, pre-disaster planning is really all about reducing or eliminating long-term risk, right? And long-term risk, risk to life and property, it's really important. It also gives us the opportunity to identify our local hazards, our vulnerabilities, critical infrastructure, community lifelines. And FEMA has established community lifelines. There's seven like critical areas. Transportation will be one. Like a lifeline for us would be the two ferry services. Another lifeline for us would be that we get food to our people. So, the IGA, communication and power on lifelines. So, when we look at hazard mitigation projects and we evaluate them, we, lifelines are really important to FEMA, and they're important to us as a community that we keep those community lifelines open. And it establishes priorities and resilience and infrastructure improvements. The highway superintendent, Ken Lewis, is here today, and a lot of these projects have direct impact or possible projects are really important to our infrastructure as a municipality. Appointed as a public works commissioner, he maintains that those infrastructures, and it's important for us to review those infrastructures and make sure they're in good, good shape as we move forward in these kinds of projects. So, go ahead Christina. All right, so what do we have to do? We have to update our, and just briefly, we have to update our list of hazards and vulnerabilities. We're going to review the status of previous mitigation actions. We have previous projects that we've worked on over the years, you know, going back to prior mitigation plans. We identified that we've not generators in some of our key facilities. Well, over the years, we've added generators to, you know, justice court, the police department, town hall, senior center was recently added, the community center now has one. So that was a mitigation project that we said, hey, how do we keep our government going during hazard? We identified them, we purchased generators, and we've reduced our risk or vulnerability in that hazard. So we're going to review our list from the last five years as we go forward. We're going to, again, review and identify critical infrastructure, and we're going to, and we're going to develop, and we're going to look to develop things from our, from our last plan, either keep them in, take them out, or, and as we carry on going forward. We identify recurring problems. We have stormwater issues, you know, we have flooding areas, we have erosion problems, we have some aging infrastructure. And so we'll look at all of those things. And then we'll update our plan and our future priorities. So, and so just a timeline for the board. We'd like to, by the end of January, and this is a compressed timeline because they're looking to have this done by the summer of '26. But for us, if you look at the bottom note, really, we've done this three times prior. So we really have a really strong existing framework in our current plan. So if we take a look at that plan, make some updates, look what's changed, then we can go toward the future. But we should have no problem staying within this timeline. That we've, you know, we finalize our mitigation goals, which is pretty easy. We complete our data collection for our annex, right? We develop Shelter Island's mitigation actions. So we do mitigation worksheets for some of our goals. We draft a plan and we submit it to the state. By the summer, hopefully FEMA reviews it, and we expect approval from FEMA on that. So it's really a joint, you know, town, county, right? Our local town, county FRES, the state DISHs, and then FEMA. And that's really our main participants from government as we move forward in this process. Do you go to the next side?
Can I just interrupt with one question on this? Like, the draft plan that gets submitted to DISHs and FEMA, that's the entire plan for the county, it's-
Yep, not just our annex.
Just making sure, like, it's all-
Right, yeah. Again, we're an annex in a bigger Suffolk County plan. All the towns and villages are a part of that, and the Indian tribes are all part of that plan. So, my proposal to the town, and I'm looking for support on this, is to identify, and we've looked at who's helped us in the past, we kind of have them on this list. My suggestion is that we have the town supervisor, the emergency management coordinator, myself, a police department rep. Part of that, so you know, is that we're trying to create redundancy. So, as my time in town government moves towards the end, in the next five years, I won't be in this role. So I want to have somebody else in the police operation that is very familiar with the role of hazard mitigation. It's important. Highway superintendent, town engineer, a town board member, sorry, I have that twice, building department representative, the town grant writer, she's great at this. She's worked with us prior on these projects, and a public information officer. Well, we don't have that true title unless we're in an emergency supervisor and you're in that role. My thought was Christina or somebody from IT that can post up. We have surveys that we may do, or surveys that come up from Tetra Tech that we want to put out to the public. We're going to want to keep our website updated. So the public information part is really important. So I'd like to have somebody from there. And then on the, from the police department side, the clerk in my office, Jen Vareski, will be doing, everything will go through her, right? So we maintain the records of this. We've maintained the last three iterations. So we're on our fourth. We'll maintain it. Everything will go through my office, and we'll push that up to the county. And then, it's not to preclude in any way the stakeholders or partners in the town. I have listed, you know, our IT department, you talk about cybersecurity, the senior services, there are a bunch, the school as one of our shelters. There are a lot of other people that we can engage in this as we meet. If we feel the need to bring them in, to engage them, to find out what's needed from them, we can invite them in. But they don't need to be in the core working, in the core working. So that is a suggested proposal for working.
So Chief Reed, Benjamin died here. Just to be clear, you only need one town board member-
Yeah, I apologize for the redundancy there. That's my mistake. One town board. Because I don't think we need more than two town reps on that, and the board can select who they feel that makes you-
Well, with a supervisor and two town board members, we have a quorum in that-
Right. No, that's a mistake on my part, Councilman. I apologize.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, Christina. Okay, so again, my request is that we affirm the working group, that we put our support, right, for participation and timely information sharing. We commit to allocating staff time as needed throughout the process. So if we need something from the building department, the building department can't say, well, you know, I can't get to that right now. You know, they have an allocated time for me. It's super important that when we reach out to these departments, that they allocate the time for quick turnaround. I mean, again, I don't believe we need to be asking for a lot of time. We're obligated because there is an in-kind match to the grant. It's 75 from FEMA and 25 from the participants, but we'll get that in hours. We're not going to have to lay out any money to it. And ultimately, we're going to ask the town board, we're going to come back to the town board when we're completed to, we'll present the annex, and then we'll ask them to approve, so that we can get it up to DISHs and then ultimately to FEMA. So, it's a good overview. So, do we have time for discussion on that committee?
Yeah, yeah, we do. So, yeah, I pulled up who was on the steering committee last time, and it was Chief Reed as emergency management coordinator. We only had one town board member on, Mike Bevan at the time, highway public works. We had the town attorney. You had, did not, did you have town attorney on that list?
I think we had him as needed. I don't want to take his time.
Okay.
But if we have a legal question, we can always reach out to him or ask him to come to us in the future.
We had someone from the building department, town engineer, grant writer, clerk from your office. We did not have public information officer.
I'd like to make sure that we do, you know, we don't talk, you know, it's a really catchy phrase, it's transparency. I definitely want to make sure that we put the information out to the public. We sat in on that vulnerabilities that the Shelter Island reporter worked, and from that meeting, you know, probably 75 people, led to maybe 100. And I took notes from that. And, you know, someone had come into the lobby today to share another point of view. So, there are things that, you know, will have Republican input. So, the more we can do to put it out to the public to get feedback, even if they see in the grocery store, people come up to us all the time as public officials, they share something with us, tell us what they see, and then they can bring it back. So, I think it's important to have a public information officer, so to speak, in terms on that.
How does the board feel about the makeup before we get to the actual-
I think it's good. It covers all the bases.
Benjamin?
Okay. For the public information officer, we are going to have someone in a temporary part-time position covering while there's a leave. So, this year, having myself as supervisor and one other town board member, I think I would want to do that just because I'm going to be overseeing the leave replacement person a little bit more closely. So, I want to stay on top of it from the public information officer's side. So, yeah, we could pull Kevin in. It's needed, I think. Yeah.
And I would agree. Even if the public information isn't on it, that they're available to timely put up-
Yes, yes. And that's what I'm thinking, is that the person, the leave replacement person would get direction from me, probably.
Because my office will cover any bits or any notes that we have and keep us on track for next, future meetings.
Okay, great. Amber, were you able to find whether, like, if we had to establish this committee via resolution 20 years ago?
I sent you-
Yeah, you did. Sorry.
That was adopting the mitigation plan, but the committee, you'll need to adopt it regardless. You need to appoint people and give them terms. Coming where?
Line of composition.
Need a document?
For the second town board position, and we're missing Albert today, but we've got Meg, we've got Benjamin, and we also have Liz in the audience for next year.
So supervisor, we've blown in a working group, not necessarily a committee. So I would, I would question you as, you know, because I would probably take the lead in that working group. Are these open public meetings? Is it a working group meeting?
It's a working group meeting.
It's an internal working-
Yeah, it's an internal, yeah. That's why I was wondering whether or not we had to even do a resolution.
Right. An official committee to work in-
Right, it's a work, yeah. Okay, right. So no res, no need.
I'm happy to be on the group.
It's not necessarily-
Right, it's going to be whenever it works.
Yeah, whatever, all the group, all the participants can get together. So it could have afternoon meetings as well. Put Liz on it and leave out the lot on your plate.
Yeah.
You have a lot on your plate too, you just don't know it yet.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, Liz on there. And then have you selected the second person in your office that you'd like to have put on?
So is Miranda.
That's what I thought since you went to the planning meeting. Okay, all right. So it would be myself, Liz, chief, urgent, Ken, town is needed, Reed, or his designate, depending on his thoughts on there, town engineer, grant writer, and Jen Vareski.
And Jen can absolutely support the public information side. I'm not sure whether there are accesses to the website on posting-
I don't think she does, so that's where, but the person, the leave replacement person will have access to the website. So, and that's why I wanted to-
Yeah. Jen's really talented. She can work through that. Even at an interim where we have somebody out on leave, maybe we enhance her ability to make some subtle changes in that information side, so that we can soften that for the person coming in.
Yeah, we'll see how-
Kevin's in our office frequently, so we can work with him on that.
Yes, yeah. We'll, when we have the person hired, we'll have a-
See who that is.
We'll see what the skill set is. So, yeah. Good. All right. Any other questions on this? Come on up.
Don Bronin, former town engineer. This is just a policy question. Emergency management mitigation or hazard mitigation is based on a management principle called deference. And deference means that people who work on hazard mitigation bring a level of expertise to the work. So, Jim Reed's a perfect example of it. This is a person who has dealt with emergency management coordination as part of his occupation for a long time. And there are people on the existing list up there that also bring certain expertise. Since this is a plan that both FEMA and the county ultimately approve as part of an annex, what do you do if the town, once they begin enacting strategies for the items on the list, get public pushback in an area that is already part of the mitigation plan? So, if you have to deal with an issue that is an unpopular one as perceived by an element of the population, what will the town policy be in dealing with that issue?
It will be, it's always up to the board, because if we have to take an action, then we need to, the board has to be behind it. So, the board has to either stand up to the pushback or take the pushback information and see whether or not it works into the plan, but-
Right. It's an important point to consider, because during the pandemic, one of the things that made Shelter Island the most successful part of Suffolk County in reacting to the pandemic was following the FEMA management structure for dealing with it. So if you stop back and think to the supervisor's administration at that time, the structure that was enacted and the jobs that were given to people in the town was in compliance with a FEMA recommended structure. So, if you found people in the town who said, I don't want to see vaccinations given out on Shelter Island, there was an effective way to counter that public opposition should it have arisen. And I would suggest that recommending or perhaps adopting a policy that says, hey, this plan was put together by people who were genuine experts, and following what's in that plan is a public health, safety, and welfare issue. I understand that there may be some unpopular things that are going to eventually show up in the mitigation plan, but even entertaining public pushback against things that are in a plan that are meant to benefit all of us is not a position I recommend that the town would take. Thank you.
Pam, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, hi, thank you. I would like to commend Chief Reed on the hazard mitigation plan that Shelter Island currently has. It's available online for the community to read through. I find it to be very thorough, and I see that, you know, he's looking forward to upgrading it and updating the data so that we can get grant money for certain things. I just think he's doing a wonderful job. I just have one question for the town board, since we will then be updating our hazard mitigation plan. Is this plan going to be an element or an appendix to the comprehensive plan? Because currently, I believe it is cited as becoming an element of the comprehensive plan, which I do believe is where it belongs. So that's really my question for the town board, and I'm looking forward to Chief Reed's fine work in improving the plan and making things safe for the public. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Anyone else?
Can you explain an element of that?
It's how we incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. I think it'll be an appendix, so that it's like we've got, I think what other things are, like the community housing plan is an appendix to it.
Yeah, it's-
Trying to think of other things, my brain is-
Yeah, the current hazard mitigation plan was incorporated into aspects of the comprehensive plan. So, we explain certain parts of our, so it's in-
Within the document itself.
In the document itself.
Not as a-
Not as like an appendix in total. It's, you know, when we go through certain aspects of Ireland and we talk about, you know, some of the potential risks that we face in the future with flooding and all that, those types of things are incorporated in the document.
I'm sorry, so then does that make it an appendix or an element of?
Right now, it's an element of the plan. I don't believe it's an actual appendix, but I have to double check.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know it's cited, I just can't remember.
It's definitely cited, but I don't think we added it in its total.
Duly noted, so we will, we will definitely talk about that. Thank you. All right, I think that's that for that topic. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item that is on the agenda is discussing work session times for 2026. So historically, we have had, I don't even know how far back it goes, that we've had our town board work sessions at 1:00 PM on Tuesday afternoons. But we have a new board member coming on in January who has requested that we consider moving the work sessions to 9:00 AM. And so I wanted to, for the board members who are continuing on, to weigh in on thoughts, and the public and Gordon can, Amber can all weigh in as well. My biggest concern when this first popped up is just when we have visitors coming in, which is not a lot, but from time to time, we do have people travel to our work sessions. And if we, you know, consider their travel times and ferry lines in the morning, little concern there about what that does for visitors. But we don't have a lot of them during the year. The other that I've always considered is town board member prep time on Tuesday mornings. And that was something when I spoke to Albert last week, that he liked the 1:00 PM time just because he liked the mornings to prep. Public muscle memory, that like, I don't know how many decades we've had Tuesdays at 1:00 PM. And then the length of the meeting, sometimes we wrap up as late, you know, sometimes it's a two-hour meeting, sometimes an hour meeting. But there have been times between the meet, the work sessions themselves and executive sessions for interviews and legal meetings and things that we've wrapped up at like 5:00 or 6:00 PM. So that would cause our meetings to go from 9:00 to 1:00, from 9:00 to 2:00 on those long days. And then, the last concern that I had is just Monday night meetings, town board meetings, rolling straight into a late meeting on Monday night, straight into a 9:00 AM on the following day. And that was also something that Albert had noted, just to give him a voice today. So I wanted to just hear, you know, where everybody stood. And I know Liz, you had made this request, I didn't, you know, know if you wanted to chime in with any, you know, further comments.
Yeah.
Not opposed, I just, my preference would be 1:00 PM, but that creates a hardship.
I mean, I guess the only thing that I would say-
Yeah, if you could come up, just so Zoom audience and-
Is that what I foresee, obviously, I'm very excited to serve on the town board, but I do, you know, to pay my mortgage and put my children through college, do need to maintain another job, is that it would make it very difficult for me, just in my profession. And so what I was concerned with is that I would foresee that I would have many days where I would have a hard stop, basically having to, if we were to continue in the afternoon, where I would basically have to stop, you know what I mean? Like, I would just be like, have to leave at 3:00. And so I thought if we could move it to the morning, then there would be more time, and I knew that I could do that all the time. So, it would definitely be a pretty significant hardship for me professionally to have it in the afternoon. And I think also, and perhaps this was my misunderstanding, but I know that just before this was like even considered, I know that I came before you guys, Julia from the Shelter Island Republicans, to kind of think about, you know, having more flexibility in the meeting times to be able to accommodate, basically, you know, working folks before the town board. And at that time, we talked about moving it to the evening, and I know that the feedback that I'd gotten was, you know, that didn't work, it was too late, but that, like, at least what I've heard at that time was that if there was someone who was on the town board who had a conflict, that that's the time at which it was, you know, at which it would be considered. So, I guess, I thought that if there was a conflict, we would reconsider it. So, I guess I'm just a bit of a man saying, like, I have a conflict, and I want to be able to put in the time, but it definitely would have been a good unsure of a lot. I would worry about the amount of things that we could get to, so.
Thoughts, Benjamin?
My thoughts are, I certainly understand Liz's request. I am not hard opposed to moving it, but I'd rather leave it where it is. You've mentioned all the things that are actually kind of important, the morning, the Tuesday morning prep time, the sometime, we've walked out of that room you're sitting in right now at 11:00 at night on a Monday after town board meeting, and then to show up again at 9:00 for a work session, doesn't leave a lot of time to be easily prepared. But, am I opposed to moving it? Not necessarily, but I'd rather leave it where it is. And, you know, I get the request. I understand. Two years ago, we were kind of in the same place with me, and luckily, the Tuesday afternoon time slot was the best thing for me and the board. So we left it where it was. So, I don't know what else to say.
Well, I have the opposite schedule of Liz. I do all my work in the morning-
I do all my work in the morning before I come here. So I'm up at 7:00 trying to get everything set for the day for my other full-time job. So it would be incredibly inconvenient. I can make it work, but it wouldn't be ideal.
Isn't he, he talks about Tuesday morning, I'm open to other mornings or I'm open to the evening. Afternoon is just like the most challenging time for me. So it's not like it has to be Tuesday morning, it's just that like on the regular, on the afternoon is, is very difficult.
And the proposal is 9:00 AM or can it be 10:00 AM or?
I was just saying 9:00 AM because, you know, supervisor had brought up that, you know, we want to make sure that there's plenty of time to get through all the work, so.
Yeah, so if we start at 10:00 or 11:00, then it's, then we're working through lunch.
Yeah.
And.
Like I said, I'm, I'm open to it, it's just like on the regular, 1:00 to 4:00, I would foresee having to cut it short often and I would be worried that it would impact the work we were able to do. If there was somebody traveling to come in or, you know, whatever, I'd be open to it.
Yeah, I mean, a hard stop at 3:00 PM is even more problematic just because we generally schedule interviews like we do today.
I, yeah, then that's kind of, that's kind of where.
Yeah.
Because basically for me, for my work, it would basically mean that nothing could be scheduled. I mean, obviously, I have to do my part time for whatever, like that's fine, I get that. But basically from 12:30 to 5:00 or something, you know what I mean? Like, which is.
And I do want to leave it on Tuesdays because we generally, you know, get the agendas out Fridays, sometimes Saturday or Sunday, but it does give people a few days. And I feel like if we push our work sessions to later in the week, we'd end up probably pushing up to the 24 hours just because people will be adding things. Whereas by Friday, it's like, okay, no one's going to add anything more until possibly Monday morning. And then, yeah, then we push them off.
Yeah.
So.
Would you consider evening then? If, if mornings are how you make and.
Now, on the meetings, we tried that a little bit, but also if we're bringing staff in, then we're asking them to come in after their workday.
I mean, I'm describing that, I think if something happens before, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we've already considered that. And actually, when we considered it a year ago and I was talking to other supervisors in other towns, they were like, the first words out of a couple supervisors' mouths were, that is really unfair to your staff. Like, how do you even have them come in and, you know, work or present? And, you know, start to have them coming up after hours, so.
So I mean, it sounds like it's a purpose, so it sounds like it's actually not flexible, is that correct? Like, I mean.
What's not flexible?
Like, are the, is it, I mean, like, are the work sessions, like, is that set by the board? I mean, is it?
Yeah, the board, yeah, the board has to approve it. We were going to approve whichever on the 22nd so that we could set the calendar for the rest of the year.
On the 22nd?
Yes, so by December 22nd, I'd like to set next year's work session calendar. We've already set the town board meetings calendar just so we can start to schedule public hearings. But I wanted to be able to have the work session schedule set as well so we could get next year's calendar populated.
Yeah.
I mean, Ken, it's not going to be fun.
Right, do 9:00 AM, yeah.
It's gonna, yeah.
And Albert's take was preference was 1:00 PM, but if we had to do 9:00 AM, like, just a little bit harder. All right, so we'll go with 9:00 AM.
Very much appreciated. I will also just say that if it is a hardship and everybody needs to come around at tax season, I am totally open to it. I just don't want to die. Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, next topic is Ken Lewis and the walking floor trailer.
Hi, everyone.
Do you want to come up to the podium?
What's that?
Want to come up to the podium?
Not really, but.
Sit at the table, it's up to you. Just as long as you project.
As long as I can be seen on the camera by.
Yeah, it's more the mic, so.
You can just slide the.
I'll slide the jibis for us.
Gets picked up.
Yeah, so I, I'm back and to talk about the walking floor trailer. If you can recall, I came to the board back, I think it was May or June, to discuss utilizing the equipment reserve fund that we have to, that we put in place many years ago, designed for specifically this purpose, to purchase new equipment as needed. And so I came to you back then to discuss the walking floor trailer, which, to remind all of you, that is the trailer that we transport all our construction debris off, and we collect it and then truck it off the island. It is approaching 20 years old, it has had multiple repairs to it already. And as of yesterday, it failed again mid-delivery of the material and it's going to be down for at least a month now. And that's barring that we can even get the parts for it. Christina, can you just bring up a couple of pictures for me quick so I can show it? This first picture is, this is something that took place back, I'd say about two months ago, three months ago, where this is the actual floor of the trailer, these are the actual fingers that move. And as you can see, if you kind of look closely at that, it is starting to, it's starting to come apart and peel up. And what you're seeing, that orange color you're seeing underneath is the actual, sort of the skid plate that it operates against. Christina, can you go to the next one? This is as of yesterday. This is a, this is a bracket that, Christina, if you go to the next picture, I think it'll show it. You can see where it sheared off. That, that large cylindrical silver item you see is one of the rams that actually moves the walking floor trailer. This, by breaking that bracket, it caused that now sags and no longer can perform what it was doing. It literally went through about three iterations of starting to take the material out of the trailer and stopped. So fortunately, at the location, they were able to push the remaining material back into the trailer and were able to shut the door and get it back here to the island to start the repair process. Christina, can you go to the next picture? That just shows, that's the larger scope of the, that's again, the ram system that's underneath. And I think this next one shows the schematic. Christina, you can hit that one too. No problem. Yeah. So this is where, this is where it's complicated. I'm just going to stand up for a second so you guys can understand the gravity of this. These individual pieces you see right here, this is the underside of the trailer. These are the, those are what operate those fingers that I say move back and forth to take things out. This large piece under here is what that bracket assembly bolts to. The one that's broke is completely worn through. So in order to replace that, you need to get to this whole piece and replace that whole piece because it's engineered to receive those bolts. To do that, that's sandwiched in between the floor and the operating mechanism above it. To say that it's a major undertaking is, to put it mildly. If we get it done in a month, like, that's even if they can even support that. Like, we're still, we called the company today to find out if they can even get to that part. And it still remains to be seen because my, my feeling is they're probably going to say, what? You want to do what? So, and I think it would probably be cost prohibitive. So anyway, so I'm here to, you know, lobby again to, because it needs town board approval. We need to be able to go to, this needs to go out the bid, obviously. So I need to receive permission from the board to put this out to bid. And it also needs to go to a permissive referendum, as you know, for a 30-day period. So I would very much like this process to begin ASAP. You know, and as, you know, I'm back here because Councilman Diet said to me that we would talk about this through the budget season, after the budget season was over. So the budget season is over, we have put additional funding back into the equipment reserve line. I believe we made the final payment just recently on the hook lift truck, which was the last thing in line, or we're due to make the last payment shortly. So there is, there is certainly enough funding to do this. I spoke to one of the companies, there's only about two companies that do these trailers. I spoke to one of the companies that we bought this trailer from originally. And he has agreed to keep the price at the same point that he quoted me at back in June. So it is going to be with, with the, with the tarp that we would need for this, we're looking at $144,000. Amber, I believe we had gone back, when we looked this up on the, on the list, we come up with a number of roughly, I think it was, over a four-year period, it would be about $37,320. It was, it's, now it's factoring in interest, et cetera. It may be slightly different, but anyway, I just, so anyway, that's. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, you want to put it up. So you can see where, yeah, the track, the, the hook lift is, yeah. We just made the final payment, well, there's one more payment in '26.
Yeah, we just finished the loader, the last payment for that.
Right, sorry, yeah, the hook lift, that's right. We had the loader was the last payment, we have one more in '26, but.
See if I can do a screen here.
Yeah, so on the hook lift, there's one more payment left?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're going to end 2025 with approximately $195,000, $196,000 once we get interest posted through the end of the year. We put into the 2026 budget, depositing, adding to reserve account $110,000. You seem to think that we'd be able to get it traded in on the old loader if we, sorry, if we go ahead with replacing that. So we're not discussing that right now, I guess you can get to that.
But that is something that, you know, we would get traded in on it, but.
So we would pay off the final hook lift truck payment of $61,801. If the walking floor trailer comes in according to that bid, $37,320. And then we still have to discuss the Hyundai loader replacement and the dump truck in the 3500 series.
Right. But this, I, I want to just impress upon you that this is, this is the priority. I can, I can, we can discuss the loader, you know, a few months down the road here as a, as a preparedness for it, and we still have the other existing, we have, you know, we still have the oldest loader as a backup loader with the one that we use at the recycling center now. And I also would like to, you know, I'd also like to discuss with Jen Messiano the possibility of a, of a DC, of a DC grant, you know, opportunity that we could possibly get through the loader too. So I want to, that's why I don't want to get into that right now. But I do want to, this is, this is pretty paramount for us because this is something that we use a great deal. And it saves us a tremendous amount of money and, you know, we, the reason that they went this route many, many years ago was because to have another company of all this stuff for us and come to take it was cost prohibitive. And we also can backhaul. We have traditionally backhauled with this, with this, you know, this trailer, meaning we've brought back material that we also sell here. We started to get away from it, excuse me, we started to get away from it because sometimes the aggregate and the stuff that goes into the trailer that you're backhauling it, you know, is causing a potential problem for especially the older unit. I don't know that it would be the case for a newer, a newer one, but because this one was aging and to have, you know, more wear and abrasion on it was probably not the, a good thing for us to be dealing with. So we do backhaul everything with a dump load, a dump trailer anyway. But it's, but we use it a lot. And so it's, it's a pretty important piece of the puzzle. And, and, you know, I've been talking about it for months and it's now, you know, I'm not going to go as far as to say it's completely catastrophic, but it's pretty catastrophic. And this is not going to be, this is not going to be an easy fix. And I can promise you that whatever we can do to it right now in order to make it operable, to let us limp through until we get this new one, is going to be a band-aid at best. So there's not going to be any promises that it's going to last.
And what will happen to the existing walking floor trailer?
I'm looking at two possibilities, I may try to see if it can be traded in for something or we may keep it and have it, you know, as a backup, you know, containment system for something for us if needed. Because I don't think, I don't know that it's worth enough money to, on a, on a, on a trade, but it's something I would discuss with any, whatever vendor, you know, ends up getting a bid for us. I would talk to them about it.
Do you just use it strictly as a container?
Yeah, possibly as a storage, you know, something for us to store many material in. If it, if it was, you know, something that, you know, in a pinch kind of thing, if it was the kind of thing where, you know, something happens with the new one and we could operate it temporarily, you know, for a trip or a trip or two, it might be something. But I'm going to look at other options, you know, or if it can't be, if it's not something that's strange, but we could use it for something to store something.
Well, Ken, thanks for bringing this back to us, we were expecting it. And it's, well, it was really important for us to go through the budget process first and see how this fits into the budget. It's, it's not a standalone thing, even though it's a separate fund and and all, all the budget pieces have to fit together. We've now been through it and, and as you saw in the budget process, you know, we had some hiccups along the way and we got hit with, you know, an extra $150K on health insurance and we had to do a dodge around that and this is all part of the same puzzle. But now that we've done it, you know, I am now comfortable in my understanding that this is okay. That we can move forward on this if the board wants to do so. But I tell you, I'm glad we went through the process the way we went through it. And I'm sorry if that delay has caused you some agita. And, but, you know, we, we got to be sensible about big-ticket items like this. And, and the way this fund is set up is, you know, obviously very sensible. It's, it's to soften the blow of big-ticket items. And, you know, what you're saying on this, this other piece of equipment, this Hyundai, yeah, it'll be an interesting conversation and see how we can get it possibly grant funded and how we can push it another year maybe. But let's not talk about that now. Let's, as far as this walking floor trailer is concerned, I'm okay, depends with the rest of the board, thanks.
I'm good with it. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the purchase.
Start preparing resolutions that are needed to go forward.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll prepare the specs so I can have it ready to go to, you know, put out an RFP for it. And I think I look back to when we, when we did, when we purchased the, I looked back through the resolutions when we purchased the hook lift, actually when Brian went through that. So it looks like it, the first part is requesting permission to let me do an RFP for it. And then as we progress, then you have to, then there's a period of time for the 30-day permissive referendum, you know, the window for anybody to chime in. So I will do that and before I put it out, I'll, you Amber and you Amber on the same page. All right?
Good.
Good, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the ethics probe update. And we have Doug here with us to go over the proposed changes.
It's in the chair spot, all right? That's the place to do it.
It's just so that we know you get picked up on mic.
I'm Wilson, Chair of the Ethics Board. And we're charged with occasionally reviewing the ethics code to try to improve it. This was a code that was adopted about three years ago now, I think. And since then, we've had about 20 cases followed by consensus, which I'm proud of. A couple of weeks ago, Stephen Levithall made a bunch of input into what he would like to see. I promised you I would go over every one of them, and I did. I think there was 36 in all, if I can take them down, which about six or seven were substantive. The board had a meeting to discuss what we think works. And we're recommending a couple of, two of those in addition to the earlier recommendation that we made a couple of months ago. I'll just review those briefly and then stand for questions. Okay? What we're recommending on the revolving door, that's a tricky situation where local ethics codes are supposed to have much in state law, have something that applies to future employment by town officials. We're diving ours way back. We'd originally copied what was in the state comptroller's model ethics code for municipalities. It had some, I think, you know, two-year probation on certain things and a lifetime probation on some others and a 30-day probation. We recommended no lifetime probation. We recommended that the one-year probation allow an ex-employee to render services for their new employee, but not to have any face time or any contact with their former board or agency that they worked on. That's much less prohibitive than the, so there's language in a lot of codes that says that they should not render services for a year. So this allows an ex-employee to work somewhere else and render services for someone that comes before their future board, or their previous board. And so this is quite loose, really, and it's in recognition that people need to work here. Former employees that go out for private employment, you know, they need to work, and the band needs to not be too strict or draconian. It's a judgment code, which, you know, words you may prefer. So that's the revolving door. And we've also clarified the gifts, clarified that it doesn't apply to things like birthday gifts and wedding gifts, unless they're intended to influence a reward and official for their official actions. It isn't the case usually. Previously, we recommended some changes to the purpose of the code to notify, to mention common law in there. It would be the only mention in the whole code that we also have to look at common law or court, you know, mandated ethics laws, which sometimes go beyond our focus on financial conflicts of interest. Our code has focused on financial conflicts of interest. It's more like conflicts of interest code than it is an ethics code in a really broad sense of ethics. You know, what are ethics? That's a difficult one. We're also recommending the disclosure section. Our code is based not on annual disclosures of all your financial holdings and financial conflicts, but on a disclosure and recusal. It's kind of like an honor system, if you will. If someone has a financial conflict of interest, they need to, in an action in front of them, they need to disclose it and recuse themselves completely. The old code had disclosures supposedly coming to us at the ethics board. That hasn't worked. We're asking that disclosures be in the minutes of boards. If it's a board member, or be made in writing to a supervisor if it's an employee on a board. We're also proposing to allow and on some things. Some people want that, I'm fine with that. And otherwise, there are pretty minor changes. Can I take questions? Let me just say, this spreadsheet with the yellow highlights is the itemization of 36 points, I think that Stephen made. And I've further highlighted in yellow the ones that have some substance as opposed to technical changes.
So the current draft that we have has red changes, which are the initial changes to the code, and then green, which is, since we got this a few weeks ago, the changes that were made from your meeting last week.
Right. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We'll say that the board spent its meetings and email correspondence for over five months to try to say what's worked and what we think should be improved in here.
From my perspective, I would like to just have more time to just go through. And like, I had made a bunch of marks and notes on both our work session a couple of weeks ago, as well as the ethics board meeting the other night, but I haven't had a chance to then prove them against this draft. Who, just Christina, do you now have? Are you the keeper of the most recent draft?
Actually, Doug is more, we just have him from Doug.
Yeah, I have this together.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, who, like, do you want to continue to be the scribe? Or should we turn that over to Christina now that it's with the board?
Either way is fine. I am going to be yawn a lot for the next few weeks. So she's monitoring to do it, just kind of.
Yes.
Be yawned to.
Yeah. But she'll still be here next week. Because I was going to put this back on the agenda for next week so that we can all submit any comments to Christine and then go over them in more detail next week, unless people want to go over things in detail today.
Yeah, I know it's a lot. This originates, as we explained a few years ago, with the state law, Article 18 of the general municipal law that says municipalities shall have certain things in their ethics code. Ours didn't have any of that. So we, if the new one has that, everybody's thinking. The state law also has, and optionally, you can have a board of ethics to administer it. Alternatively, you can define things like future employment. And it doesn't have all the directive on that. I think it gives municipalities some discretion. What we did was, for the most part, we copied a model code from the state comptroller or from other codes.
All right, so I think what I'd want to do is put it back on the agenda. Because you and certain, you know, some members of your board are going to be away, I'm trying to think of like the best month to set the public hearing, just because I would imagine that some of you would want to be able to tune in and hear any public comments. So I don't know whether or not, like, you don't have.
I'm just going to be in Florida, so I can Zoom. But I thought, once upon a time, it was mentioned, January.
Oh?
Yeah, which, yeah, we have an ethics board meeting that day of one. So as many of us are going to be here as possible, three of us. I don't know if that's so possible for a public hearing on this.
Yeah, we do, we just have to have board comments definitely back by next week on the 16th so we could set the public hearing and have the draft for posting on December 22nd. So then it could be, we could have the public hearing on the 22nd.
Okay.
All right.
Whatever works. And for the new members, we have, there's a whole bunch of documents on our ethics board website that includes like the origin of this.
I did look up a little bit when you were meeting.
Okay.
So I'll add more questions, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that all for now?
That's it. I think we've got a plan. Yeah?
Good. Thanks.
You gave me a chance to marry my notes. Yes, exactly, yeah. I've got like multiple drafts that I want. Now transcribe or cross out. Thank you. And thank you to the ethics board for all the work on this. Hey, actually, we were going through the agenda faster than I expected. Oh, good, Amber is back. Tetonis. I, we had a public hearing, but there was no one who came to speak at the last town board meeting. And that, the reason we had another public hearing is we had closed it at one point. And do you have copies or can you screen share the draft resolution?
I sent it to you.
It emailed into us. Okay. I didn't get like just the cut and paste. I think I had like all of the minutes.
That was a different one.
It was a different one?
And just a reminder, I had recused myself on this matter.
Oh, yes.
Turned off my camera.
Okay.
My computer is so slow right now.
Oh.
Oh, good evening.
I'll send it to Christine, you think?
Yeah. I'm trying to open it. It was in the email, she said about 11:01.
11:11? 11:11?
It was there, Tetonis.
That's not 11:09.
That's it. Oh, I sent it today. Here, you have it. It's 1:15.
Open it, though, it says Tetonis, that's the resolution.
Okay. You responded to that one for something else, so it.
Yeah, so it's misnoted. And you were saying 11:09 and like 1:15.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. I was absolutely wrong.
Need a holiday break?
Yes, I do.
Have you got it up?
I have mine now.
Okay, yeah, because I'm still, like, I have to download it and then I've got to get to the resolution, so. Do you want me to share?
Yes.
Yes. So Tetonis had asked that we reopen the hearing. But then I think there was some miscommunication with the applicant about, or at least applicant's representative. So no one showed. So at this point in time, we've closed the public hearing. We don't have a request to reopen the public hearing. We did, once upon a time, have a draft resolution. So I wanted to just highlight what was in that draft resolution. And I say we proceed because we closed the public hearing. So unless the applicant comes back before we pass it to reopen the hearing, or they can reapply later to try and have their case heard again. So we had said on this one. Do you want me to just go down to the conditions? Well, actually, hold on a second. I saw something with modifications. But now we're hereby as approves the following to adopt modifications. We were saying remove two six-foot by 16-foot platforms, remove 16 pilings, remove seven feet from the existing 237-foot dock, construct four-foot by six-foot platform with three-by-12 aluminum ramp leading onto a five-foot by 30-foot floating dock, secure with two anchor pilings, supplying yourself four tie-up pilings and six fender piles. And then if you could scroll down a little bit, be it further resolved. Yeah, I think that was it, that area. And that's, I think, the, that's what we had decided at the time. And so from my perspective, since we have not heard anything else, anything new, it is no one showing on that last meeting, that we just proceed with putting this resolution on for the 22nd.
I mean, yeah, we can. They just, they never came back to explain why they were opposed to the resolution. I think it had something to do with.
It was a possibility, maybe they'll open it.
Make a request. But I feel like we just need to, like, this is where we are in the process legally, and we need to just finish with this. Yeah, and it's up to the three of us.
Nothing changed.
Okay. All right, so that's what we will do with the 22nd. Sounds like a plan. Board member reports. I don't think we got to board member reports because my pile was kind of full. CAC met on November 22nd. They were in the process of making their final changes on the wetlands code. They would finish up their notes and get it back. Right now, planning board has site plan review. And once they finish that, planning board will pick up the wetlands code. So CAC has given their comments. Once we get planning board comments, I guess it goes back to the subcommittee to review all of those comments and hopefully get it to the town board early in the new year. Yeah.
And then after we pass it, we can then talk about wetlands review.
After site plan review, yes.
Site plan review.
Yes. Yeah, we'll get site plan review first, and then we can go to. As far as new business that CAC wants to look at in the new year is they wanted to look at zoning and deed covenants and restrictions on machamuck and any other kind of like cartland. They also want to take a closer look at the dark skies law. So that's sort of what they're thinking about in the new year, besides the usual advisement to the board. Capital planning and grants. I feel like we did cover that meeting. Yeah, because Suffolk County has a mitigation plan. Yeah, we moved forward with 5310 grant application. It's that. Darren Tick met on December 3rd. And there's fewer new hunters enrolled this year, but some, and they had a loss of some of the higher performers. But people who haven't produced as much in the past are stepping up to fill that gap. So the numbers were pretty close to where we were last year. And then as far as education and concerns about, you know, ticks and, you know, sending out literature, they're going to make an effort to work with the different homeowners associations to get more information out to the general population on things that they can do. We had the East End Supervisors and Mayors Association meeting on December 3rd. We talked about e-bikes and scooters. And the county and the state are going to look at implementing new laws and new protections. Like, there hasn't been a lot done out there. And so one of the things is, you know, making sure more people have to wear helmets, you know, making more education out there, you know, kids under 16 should not be riding these things. And talked about some of the safety concerns. Sergeant Rando went with me just to understand, you know, Southampton and East Hampton had like way more of these on the roads, and they've had way more children on the roads. And they talked about some of the enforcement issues that they face when it's, you know, you pull a child over on an e-bike. You know, you can't really give a child a ticket. You can't really give a parent a ticket if they don't know the child's riding. So some of that was all discussed so that, you know, we're going to, the county and the state, we're going to let them work on the traffic codes to implement things. And then if the towns decide that we want to do something more restrictive than the county and state laws that should be coming down, we want to work together so that we are consistent amongst all the towns on the east end. As far as the legislative updates from higher-ups. As far as the legislative updates from higher ups, the biggest one was if we have anything that goes before the Army Corps of Engineers, projects are going to be taking longer for responses.
Longer than the overview.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah. Board of Ethics, they've already done that. Last Friday, I was invited to go with Judith Legmansky, our town assessor, to the Suffolk County chapter of the New York State Assessors Association, where she was sworn in as the new vice president for that organization. So, and it was actually an interesting group to get together with and talk to. So Rich Schaefer, the supervisor from the town of Babylon, was swearing in the president from his town. So I got to help co-swear in Judith. But congratulations to Judith. It's really an honor for her to be selected to represent this organization. West Neck Water met last week. They had presented some of their survey results. And there was a discussion on wanting to be informed if the Shelter Island House is converted to housing, what the impact on the Suffolk, on the West Neck Water District would take place, just as far as availability and things. But we're still waiting on a building permit to come through. So we haven't seen anything. But if it does go through, I think there'd be a special permit that would have to be looked at. So that would be one instance for the public to look at it. And then it would have to go for site plan review. So they just want to be kept in the loop, but there will be opportunities for that. Community preservation advisory board, there was a large attendance because the Shelter Island Arts Council came in to talk about the use of the Seven South Heartright property. And there was some misinformation out in the public that this was a fait accompli, which it definitely is not. It was just an opportunity for another group. And there have been people come in with ideas in prior meetings. They just didn't get the press or coverage that this one did. So a lot of people spoke. There were some for and some against. But again, first, we have to legally find out what the property can be used for before any determination. So that is going to go before legal counsel that the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board has. So she will come back to them with a detail of exactly what can be done. And then the Pecanic Bay Region Advisory Council, next week, will just be going over, there was an amendment made to that IMA. So we'll just go over that briefly, get that passed on December 22nd. Hopefully, by the end of the month, all five towns will agree and pass the IMA so that that advisory board can then become, get formed in the organizational meeting, you know, our organizational meeting for that Pecanic Bay Region Advisory Board in January so that if we want to start sending them questions such as, is this an acceptable use? Maybe by the first quarter 2026. That can happen. WMAC met last night. They are recommending, there's going to be a change. Chairperson will be Matt Williamson and deputy chair will be Bill. So there was just a little flip-flop in their positions. And let me just look to see if there's anything special to highlight. Yeah, I think that was, just, you know, looking at future applications that might be coming in. But those applications need to get in before we start running over those.
Yeah, I think that's all that I have. You guys are going to have a thing.
I was just going to say a couple of weeks.
I had an irrigation subcommittee meeting, so we're still working on that. We're going to have another meeting next week. So that's moving forward. Otherwise, I think we've covered everything. Sure, it's me.
Probably the only thing that I would like to just talk about. I attended the CPF meeting. And it was, it was the, I thought it was a good exchange of ideas. I think that that's what democracy is about. I think when, obviously, being the chair, when the property was, before it was closed and acquiring it, there were a lot of misinformation. Okay, but I think some of those things need to be really addressed. The building, okay, was never part of, was not part of the consideration, or did it have any value in the purchase price? Okay? The other part is that, you know, we, as preservation, we had a building that was in reasonably good condition. Okay, so I think the idea, and you've heard this, I'm sure, but it was one of, you know, it's sort of painful when we need housing on the island that we're tearing down a building. So the question becomes, what can we do with a building that had some practicality without impacting tax dollars, without doing these things? So I think, I think what you said is correct. It really is, it was the first time that a building had been brought up for other purposes. I mean, there's been all kinds. I mean, I had a list of 22 items, but I'm not going to go through them. But what I saw so far, okay, from fit centers to docks to you name it, okay? But I think that's, I think that's healthy to see if you, you know, if we had tore the building down to begin with, we could have possibly had people say, why did you tear down such a wonderful building? Okay, when it was really usable? And it could have been used some other way. I think it's, I think it's a good process to see what, and it's not tied to anything specific. It was never an arrangement with any group of people. I think it's just a good process. You know, you've probably heard me say this, but it's like, you know, when you have, we have a lot of voices, a lot of people have concerns, okay? And I just think it's a good, I think it's a good discourse. I think that, I think this is good. I think you need to have that kind of discourse of what you do and how you solve problems. The easiest thing to do is to tear it down. And that's really what the whole goal was during the acquisition process, okay, that it had no value. But you know what? Let's see if the community can come up with some usage. Okay, that really would make sense, that conforms to the 64E in the legislation and so forth, which is what you're trying to determine right now as to whether you do it. The fears of it amorphizing into something else where it becomes on the taxpayer's dime is of concern, okay? There were some concerns about that that were brought forward. But it's still something that the new board will have to consider. And I think that, I think the process is good, the way it was laid out. I think people should have the ability of looking at it. And, but I think the most important part is with 64E, or is it something to do? And does it set any precedent? Okay, meaning if you do something going forward, what does it mean? Okay? But I thought the number of people turning out, I thought was a, was a good thing. I think the acquisition, after, besides the building, I think the acquisition is a good thing for the community. Okay, it's another access point on the island for the people have a public view. It's interesting, when you go there, if anybody's been there recently, you look at a building that's going up on the left-hand side, you'll see a big structure going up. Just always remember that, okay, there could have been three buildings on that site. Okay, so we really did, we did protect that property appropriately. But I, hopefully, it'll be resolved, okay? But it's, there was never any predetermined with any particular group, okay? It's just, it is a shame when you have buildings to tear down things that are usable. I mean, obviously, the garage is something that could be, not could be, should be maintained because it can always operate as a storage facility, okay? But I think, I think the process is going in the right direction. And it'll be for the new board to determine, you know, what the outcome is. So for all the fears that are there, the easiest thing to do is to tear the building down. The hard thing is to determine, can you use it for something that is constructive for the full community? You know, there is some other benefit other than open space. You know, having been with community preservation for so many years, every time we did an acquisition, okay, there was lots of talk about, well, you know, we're affecting community housing. We're raising the price of real estate. You know, there's always going to be objections, but the program of CPF is really well-founded and it serves well here on Shelter Island. Thank you.
Thanks.
Benjamin, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to say, we did have the tree lighting last night, which was really nice. So now we're going to have a lovely lit up tree in the center of town. And the chamber did cookies and drinks. And then some of the kids played their instruments. And it was a very lovely evening. So I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody who participated in that. And the high rate guys for doing all the lights in the tree. And it was lovely. We are going to go into executive session to look at a contract and an interview. We motion to, I was meaning to go into executive session. I mean, all favor.
Hi.
Thank you.